Okay, we'll call the meeting to order.
Well, yeah, we do it another way.
Four of us here, we have enough for a quorum. Both Pat and Jerry had work issues that they had to attend to, so what you see is what you get here. Could we all stand, face the flag, and if so inclined, join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that question, I didn't follow the rule there.
I think that's not a good question. Yep, that's where I'll move it to.
I'll do it different next time.
I'm gonna take it right on.
I'll do it next time, for sure. Okay, anything new, different, amended on the agenda?
There will be an amendment, Letter E, consideration to approve the world's best workforce. I know this is pretty hard to believe, but they've changed two components of it again, and they've changed the due date of it again back to January. So as soon as it's complete and meets up with MDE, we'll have it on here again, but for now, we'll remove.
So Item E will be removed for future date.
Correct.
Anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Kurt.
I have my choices today, don't I?
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the minutes from the September 22 and October 13. Have you had a chance to review, and are there any changes that you'd like to see?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Future discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Okay, scheduled presenters, we have our auditors here from Abdoite to present the 14th audit result. Okay.
You guys all remember Matt?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Always funny to good news.
Yes.
Well, for the presentation, what's nicer than going through the one with the color on the front page, the smaller Cliff Notes version, if you will, of the audit. Opening up the first page, really why, you know, why I'm here is to, for the audit, give an opinion on the financial statements. That is, you know, what your staff is giving to you monthly, here's our accounting information, for where we're sitting for the year, all of our balances, that that's all being reported at year-end in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That opinion that we're giving is an unmodified opinion. That's the clean opinion, that's the one that you want, and that's consistent with what we've had each of the last several years that I've, about 10 years that I've been on here, so great to see that consistency. As part of the audit, we do look at internal controls as well over that financial reporting. With that, we don't get an opinion on that, the same way we do of your account balances, but when we do come across items that we consider significant, we'll note that here in the management letter. With that, we have two items that we'd like to note on Page 2, and two others that we will look at as well, Page 3. First one, preparation of financials on Page 2. This really comes down to a standpoint of, we're auditing your financials, but we also help put this report together. With that being said, this is not unusual at all for organizations your side. For our clients, we actually have this finding in probably over 85% of our clients, so very common finding, just from a cost-benefit standpoint, to try and put these together yourself, very common. What I do like to point out there within the recommendation, that last sentence, you know, what we recommend, agreeing your accounting information to make sure it's in line with the audit. Well, what's nice is that's inherently built within the reporting requirements that you have in the actual audit. We have to compare from what's in UFAR's to the audit, and with that, there's no significant variances. That, as well as what your staff looks at in the draft, helps keep that from being a material weakness. So what's nice is that there's not an over-reliance, there are some checks and balances already in place. The next one for material audit adjustment, what this comes down to is that when we do come in at the end of the year, there's several things that aren't really adjustments until that year-end. You know, a couple of them with accounts payable, with your actual general education receivable based on what your student enrollment, those are estimates. And within that, we did end up making a few adjustments. It's not saying that there's an inconsistency or a weakness in the information you're getting monthly to make decisions, it's just more that one-time year-end entries, we did have to make some adjustments. So with that, we've discussed that with your staff and feel that there's a really good understanding of what those were to remedy it going forward.
So you're saying the adjustments aren't necessary if a different procedure was followed?
Using the information on what's available on the state's website, the latest time available, what, you know, one of them has to do with the property taxes, what you levy to be collected in the next year, and just that year-end entry, and how that got posted. It's not that there is a different procedure that could have been done, but there's something that we can discuss in future years, well, that we for sure will discuss, to try and eliminate those specific ones, to get that understanding with you. On Page 3, that top paragraph just says that there's some compliance areas that's just required inherently in doing an audit of a school. You know, they want to make sure that you have proper banking requirements, that you check dispersments, that the proper procedures or statutes are being followed. Another side of that is looking at your student activity accounts. Within that, we do have two items that we wanted to mention here. One of them with the dispersments, that it is a requirement within the student activities to have the proper approval prior to making that dispersment, and so that that's something that we had a few instances that weren't being followed, that just being aware of, and then trying to figure out something of a procedure that can catch that on the front end would be our recommendation. Within that, the student activity accounts, not uncommon, but just having a system of checks and balances in place, that segregation of duties issue, it's great. You don't have that on the overall district-wide. It's more just within here, trying to build those same checks and balances to really reduce the risk of having over-reliance on any one person as those transactions flow through. With that, it's been nice talking to the staff, too, that we think that there's some procedures that could be implemented, some checks and balances, that won't be overly time-consuming or heavily cost-effective for timeliness, too, that can be put in place. On Page 4, really nice page to point out, because the only thing to really point out there is on the top, a summary of prior year findings, got one taken off.
I went down and signed the card.
Yeah. Always nice when we have these items and stuff's been put in place, yep, get it taken care of.
It's a tough one.
I know, it was, it's very time-saving.
Page 5, right at the top there is corrected and uncorrected in the statement. What I'd like to point out there, even though we had that finding for that material weakness, what's nice is there wasn't like a laundry list of things. It's not like we're coming in here for the audit and having to clean up a lot of areas. It was just kind of those, I mean, the one, the general education receivable and property tax, were actually pretty tied together, so there weren't a lot of things needing correction. So basically, giving credit to your staff still for the work that they do, a really smooth audit, and that's reflective in here, not having a lot of items. One other thing to point out, right at the bottom, quarterly reports and monitoring, really just to have a recommendation for you as far as board, that ultimately making those financial decisions, it's a lot to kind of have on your plate, ultimately that falls on the board. So we recommend getting something quarterly at a minimum to have that actual data available to make those decisions that come up. With that, starting on Page 6 is where it kind of gets into some of the numbers, where the year ended up, once we take into account all the rules, which is quite a bit of, you know, receivables, you know, the state, and when they are waiting to upload, what's the latest available, what did you end up for students on the year that is going to impact what your final aid is going to be. What we see on the year is that you budgeted for a $364,000 decrease in the general fund balance, and you ended up about $120,000 more of a decrease than that. Now, part of it, when you look at this table here, expenditures were $258,000 of that variance, but there's a capital lease issue for $170,000. That's those offset, right? You know, they're related to what was done for the bus for the year. So really, the net out of that is only $100,000 roughly, compared to $11 million budget, that's awfully consistent from an audit perspective, you know. When we see within 3% to 5%, that's within results, within expectation. So overall, it'd be 1% on that, is good results on the year. Within the revenues, kind of same thing, where there's offsetting amounts in the year, where what was given for taxes was kind of offset with what was in the state aid from the tax shift. And we actually see that when we flip to Page 7, or actually, flip ahead two pages. If you look at Page 8, that's that impact of that tax shift, you know, you can see a blue line that has a pretty big spike there, that basically the state borrowed some money from what you're getting in your own taxes, and when the cash is available, they kind of inherently borrowed that in fiscal year 11, and then they paid back about half million dollars here in fiscal year 14. It doesn't actually affect your fund balance, but it does, now you have that cash back available, which is good, hopefully less borrowing for any short-term anticipation. Flipping back to Page 7, once we break things down for the year, you know, we all end up, when you look at this for fund balances, you want to sit and say, where are we at for what our needs are for the year? You know, there's important side for fund balance, there's an important side for cash balance, for what you need to have. On average, we recommend between 8% to 10% at a minimum. You know, that's going to bring you within at least a 1% or a 1-month reserves, and considering what the state has borrowed of your cash, might be something that the board, you know, continues to discuss where you want to be at for your goals. We'll put it in here, 8% to 10%, but where it's at at the end of the year, 9.5% unassigned fund balance, just under 12% overall, your fund balance, it's important to keep an eye on that, and more from the point where we were back in fiscal year 2010, where that was 5% and 3%. You know, that it's, if it's your goal is to keep it at that level from where it peaked in fiscal year 13, just keeping an eye on that. We skip ahead to Page 9 then, since we already looked at 8. As far as, once we break that down, the detail, looking for trends, revenues, which you've had in the year, overall, $10.6 million revenues fiscal year 14, compared to $10.8 million fiscal 13. Well, part of that is the increase, your revenue from state sources, and what looks like a decrease in tax levies. It wasn't that much of an increase in state sources, it wasn't that much decrease in taxes, that's that tax shift playing an accounting impact of it again. So overall, pretty consistent, yep. Page 10, on the flip side of the revenues, is where your expenditures were within the general fund. We see that total line, you know, $9.7 million fiscal year 12, up to $11.3 million fiscal year 14. Sometimes it's easier to see that in the chart, where within those categories, you see any significant variances. But to be honest, we've got a lot of lines going on here, the ones that, the ones that actually, you know, when you eye them up, stand up more, is just where it was for the elementary and regular instruction, that first line on top. Well, yes, it was an increase from where it was the past two years, but it was an increase in line with what your budget, from what we had before, no significant variances there with what your expectations were. Your special ed did have an increase as well, going from roughly $1.3 million the previous two years, up to $1.6 million in fiscal year 14. And then the other one that kind of had a jump was the capital outlay, quite a bit going from $250,000 and less the previous two years to over 600, almost $620,000 in fiscal year 14. The one thing I also would like to point out, that kind of a new addition out of this, we always appreciate feedback and hope we pass some along to Beth or Josh after this presentation, but a common question is, where are we sitting compared to other districts? Where are we sitting compared to ones we audit? So what we went through is actually compiled that information. On your, on Page 13 has a summary of what your average daily membership was for your students, and it's pretty consistent, you know, around under 1,200, you know, this year about 1170 for average daily membership. So within that, other districts within that same or similar size, where are we sitting compared to those? Overall, what you see on Page 10 is, when we break it down, out of 11.3 million spent with a significant increase in capital outlay, we're about 9,700 per student. That peer group average is about 10,600. So even with that significant increase in the capital outlay for this year, which are about one time, you're still 10% less than what that peer group is. Outside of the general fund, kind of a go over with quick points on the other remaining funds on Page 11, debt service, year-ending cash balance is about $990,000, pretty large, but year-ending fund balance is only $100,000. That cash balance there is to help pay those second-hand payments on your debt. So when you look at that chart below, and you see that red line, red bar representing interest, a big piece of that is due kind of in that August timeframe, so it's, looks like a significant cash balance, but it all gets spent pretty quick, maybe fiscal year 15. Food service, really would point out there, you know, we did have a $33,000 increase on the year, fund balance. Typically, we recommend at least a 1-month reserve in this fund, and that would put you at a balance of about $53,000. So it's nice that, really, you're almost double that from where, at a minimum, we'd recommend, kind of like we're sitting with the general fund, trying to set those benchmarks as far as a board of, you know, what's our target with that, and if it gets ahead of that, what would we like to do with that, unless there's some capital. Maybe it actually needs to be well above that amount for any replacement that we have to do with it in service. Page 12, community service, similar situation, kind of when we look at fund balance, not a significant increase on the year, $16,000, you know, about 5% increase. Really, the takeaway there again is fund balance, what would that need to be for a minimum balance of 1-month reserve? That would be around $52,000. There is actually quite a bit more there within this fund than, comes back to, maybe there's some decisions that you can make on what we'd like to use that for, maybe there's more available than what was anticipated otherwise. On the bottom is kind of where that looks like, overall, once we look at all those funds combined, $1.7 million compared to $2.1, considering what we had again for capital outlay and other increases from the budget, pretty good for the year, especially when you look at where it was just three years ago in fiscal year 11. But again, as far as how does it look, it still all comes back to what does the board have for direction, what does administration show for direction going forward. Within that, just the other information here is kind of filler information, what's coming up for future accounting standards. I will say that there's a really big one here, that's going to have a significant financial impact as far as what your overall looks, and that's this GASB 68. Basically, what it's requiring is that, for what all the pension funds are out there, they're state, you contribute to them based on what your rate is, but right now, they don't try to be 100% funded, para, TRA. They try to set that rate to try and kind of cover that balance over maybe a 20-year, 30-year term, kind of like what you set your mortgage at. And so what the accounting standard said is, across the board, overall, that's up to the employers to cover that. You know, TRA can't come up with their own funds, you know, they invest money and try to get earnings there, but in the end, it all is, the employer's contributing. So in the end, for what that's unfunded, really, that's an employer liability, I mean, that's what they're trying to say. Well, for how much that is unfunded, more than likely, I mean, for where your fund balance is, just be prepared that, you know, next year's audit, you're actually going to be in the hole, expected to be in the hole in your overall net position, once you take away your assets, and now adding that debt on, it's going to say that your overall equity is going to be negative. Now, that's something that we talk with your creditors, you know, at Standards and Poor's, your rating agency, they're well aware of that as well. And what's nice is that they're telling us, we've always been aware of that pension liability, even though it hasn't been on your financial statements, if we don't anticipate giving you any less rating on any future borrowing for like the aid anticipation, if you did a capital project. So it will have a big effect, but luckily, you know, others are aware of it as well.
If they know and understand that so well, why do you see people retiring, coming back, cashing in their TRA, but then working again? Why does that continue to be, they're not contributing to TRA, but they're taking out of TRA? Do you see that continuing, or?
Well, I don't know if, what I'm curious about when that happens is how much the actuaries, the ones that are coming up, trying to estimate that liability, how well they're trying to project that.
Seems like something to be off there, you know.
You know, I'm not auditing what they're doing for the report, but yeah, it definitely has an impact, and what's interesting is, so they're going to require you to put this whole liability. The closest thing I can relate to it, the one that makes most sense, is if you look at your vacation and sick time, you don't have to call for that in the general fund. You know, we're going to pay that, we know it, but we're building up reserves to try and set aside for it. What's different about this one is that there's no building up reserves. If you had a big liability, you're not going to bond for it to pay it off, you're just going to keep paying the rate at what it's at. TRA, para, they're not going to adjust their rates to try and have it spend down any sooner just because people are worried about this liability. It's just a reporting thing, it's not going to affect your general fund, it's not going to affect your budget for making the decisions you have to do every year. With that, not least of all, I want to point out that we're really happy to be here, thank you for the business. I've been really happy to be out here for, like I said, almost 10 years, I like the relationship out here. Nice having the, getting to talk to Beth, too, over the last couple of years. She tolerates us, it's nice, yeah, well.
Always be nice to the auditors.
Somehow Josh keeps on letting us come back, so we appreciate that.
Somehow you guys keep wanting to come back.
With that, are there any questions?
So I guess overall, you're, I mean, it's a great report. Do you see us pretty much being just keeping the bar level, getting down coming up as far as the audit scores? I mean, we're getting the same score probably, right?
Well, you're getting the same clean audit opinion.
Right.
You hear the question, right, you're kind of, you're talking more about, you know, how are we doing as far as financial results, you know, that, as we kind of went through, there's been a significant change over the last couple of years of building up reserves to improve on what that score might have been four or five years ago, like I said, that fund balance, 5% a few years ago. This is more in line with what we've written about, but you know, I think you have some more capital projects coming up in just the year 15, so it's still important to keep an eye on that, that, I don't know if it's going to even maintain that number, but being aware of it, keeping that in mind for almost a two- to five-year focus, planning ahead for other boards as well, that you don't want to be back in that position.
It used to have a fund balance recommendation, probably closer to like 16% in years past, correct?
And part of that, and interestingly to bring it up, one thing I do want to make a change for next year's management letter, that might help make a better picture of that, part of that recommendation is out of a cash balance mentality. You know, if the state is funding only, giving the payments twice a month, and if they ever decide to take money back again on a tax shift, it's important to know where your cash balance is at, and that's where that 16% kind of came more into play. And so maybe within what we have on that chart, that's saying what the general fund balance is on Page 7, just adding a line, instead of both those fund balance categories, adding a line that says, what's that cash balance category? And that that might be a metric as well, that we want to have enough reserves, just so we're not totally reliant on the state and for what they've done for borrowing our own cash in the past. But that's where that 60% was more of, that 2% reserves.
So your recommendation's kind of changed by how the state's treating the districts and how we're...
And how they actually paid some of it back.
Right, yeah. So because of that's changed, the shifts have changed, you're looking at for recommendation changing.
Right.
Okay.
Now, do we hear anything that they're going to be borrowing that back? We might try and say, I want to bump that up again yourselves, just to not have to do so much of those aid anticipation certificates.
When you go back to Page 10, we're looking at $9,700 per student, and our peer groups are looking at close to $1,000 more than that. Do most of our peer groups that you put in here have a levy in place as well?
For debt service as well?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
They must, yeah.
Yep, definitely.
It's pretty remarkable that we're under them by that much and have a really great student population, too, so, okay.
You're, in what you're looking at, the OPEB fund that we have, eventually, that probably won't be, that's going to dwindle down over time, is there any creative ways of financing or looking into something like that in your experience as to how they go about supporting an OPEB fund, and, you know, it will sustain itself over the years, and, you know, what we're looking at there?
That one's a tricky one, because it, it's kind of like that same one that you're about to have to put on your books for the pension liability. It's not something you can just pay off now, and that's where you took advantage that you could bond some money to kind of have something that you set aside for it. But where we, I like the question, because when we look at it, let's see if I can find it here, on Page 55, your portion of that liability at the end of the year is only $239,000. Now, that's partly an option that you have for how you actually get to record that liability. The actual liability is on Page 64, and that says it's $2.1 million. Well, the thing is, for how much you continue to pay off for current retirees, it's always kind of reducing the amount that it says you should be contributing, so it's like you're always contributing a little bit. So when that liability came up and it said, hey, here's a $2 million liability, well, you're already inherently paying for it just out of what your premiums are set at and what they're on the plan. It's a little misleading to say, do we have to have all this funded? So that decision comes on your end of life. It's nice to have that money, you can take advantage that when you bonded for it, we're able to help in our general fund to cover something that's there as it goes along, that we're kind of almost covering one-to-one. Page 55 shows it increased $260,000, but on the same note, paid almost $220,000 for those retirees towards those premiums this year, pretty comparable. It's a tough decision to say what we necessarily recommend, that your fortune falls more back to you, to the board.
No, there's going to be reporting changes, that won't change anything as far as budgeting purposes for the district then, right?
Correct.
Good.
And that's the nice piece out of this, it's kind of like that OPEB, you know, it doesn't affect what you're going to set for your levy.
I'll set budgets for the next year and everything, right? Okay, good. Because I can just hear Beth come back going, you know.
Okay, any other questions?
Looks good. I think we're good with it all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again, appreciate it. I'll see you next year.
Next, we've, we're on Item 6, we've moved this baby up, public forum. Does anyone have any issues, school-related, they would like to speak to us about? Done. Finance report, attachment B. Josh?
When your agenda there, attachment B, the first page of that, it'd be the cash flow statement, and just a couple of things to note, we've got recently our first settlements from Goodyear County and Dakota County, an estimated about $500,000 for Goodyear County, then being $552,000. Dakota County, an estimated $30,000, actually going to be $20,000. Net little gain, like I said, you try to be a little conservative when I put in an unknown number such as that for revenue, but I'm hitting all right. So really, no major or significant changes in what we have with the cash flow, just other again to note, and kind of correlates with the audit, where we are with cash, which is generally different than your fund balance, but we're there with cash, not having to do any anticipation borrowing this year, which is nice. Don't know that necessarily will be the case next year, but at least again for this year, not having to borrow to meet payments. So next page is going to be kind of a summary of the last month reconcile, compared against last year's month. We've got September 2014 versus September 2013. On the sheet, there's just a slight error when we had done reporting last year, the OPEB withdrawal got counted twice, so the general fund is a little misleading there. Essentially, where we are in cash for general fund is about $470,000 difference from last year, spent down. A large portion of that was planned spending down from last year, and now again into this fiscal year, spending down the general fund. Food service, like was reported, is doing well, we're about $20,000 ahead of our award last year. Community ed again, doing well, $85,000 ahead. Debt service, it's set to fulfill what we need for our mortgage payment. In our economy, we generally collect fairly well on debt, you are scheduled to collect 105%, and we do a pretty good job of that. Trust in the agency, that's gone down, and that's going to happen as the scholarships are paid out, and there's not usually a whole lot of inflow of cash rather than... are paid out, and there's not usually a whole lot of inflow of cash rather than the scholarships that get paid as they're received. OPEB debt service, and that one, it shows as only, it shows that we've gained money in the OPEB over the last year, and that didn't happen. That's where that error was occurring. The balance last year was actually about $600,000 in the OPEB. So we did spend that down, about $100,000, did pull out to help fund some of those retiree benefits, like Matt had said, about $226,000 last year, and we covered not quite half of that with the $100,000 that we brought down. There's some discussion at finance, meaning of what kind of direction to go with that, and I think there'll be an ongoing discussion as we're kind of at the midpoint now, we have a $1 million bond, or down to half. And then, 147 is the OPEB debt service, just the same thing, mortgage payment on that fund. The next few pages are just going to be the detail of what occurred each of those funds. Kind of, you would say it's neat or consistent thing is, most funds hit roughly the same sort of activity fiscal year 15 versus fiscal year 14. We went and decreased some spending in fiscal year 14 last year, but the general fund would do the same this year, but very close to the amount, so it's pretty consistent. Not a whole lot of big changes other than community, and this is the timing issue, but about $30,000, $35,000 less in revenue for fiscal year 15 versus fiscal year 14. And again, just a timing thing, and the unfortunate thing with community is, we can kind of withstand that right now with the fund balance that's in the yet. Are the net real consistent? Not a whole lot to stand out, if there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Josh, I've got a question on food service. I don't necessarily love being up $20,000 in food service, just because of kind of what's going on right now with federal requirements, and I know that Lori and Wendy work really, really hard on that. Lori, can you, is there still the push, we will have to get to a higher rate?
Yes.
So what are, what are other schools doing? Because when I check with our, my peer group of superintendents, they're not getting this increase in food service like this. Is this something that we're, I mean, we shouldn't be up $20,000?
Yeah, and, you know, part of it could be, and this is going to be quite a while now, but when you've been around, while you've kind of been through, we had to borrow funds from the general fund.
Right, I remember that.
Cash flow, the food service, and the state doesn't like to see, we did a lot of things to correct that and adjust. And part of that is reducing some of the expenditures that were maybe called to the food service. Definitely to look at quoting more expenses to utilities, oil and gas to heat, electricity to run things.
I guess I just want our community to hear, you know, it isn't our idea to raise prices on lunch. I mean, it's an unfortunate thing, I don't, I guess I want to convey that we're not trying to make money in food service, we're certainly not trying to do that to our community, but we've got to stay pace. If we've got to get to $2.62, 64 cents, you know, we've got to make those baby steps to get there so that we don't go from, you know, $2.30 and have to jump up that high. I just think it's confusing to our public that we're making money in lunch and we're raising prices. It's a mixed message unfortunately to our taxpayers, and I wish there was a way around that.
Are the districts taking the increments as well?
Everyone's pretty much staying pace. We're all within 10, 15 cents of each other. Everyone's trying to keep pace on that, but it doesn't sound like they're going to, you're going to have to get to that dollar amount. And I wish we could set our own prices. You have seen in the news recently that some schools are stepping away from the federal program. I've done some work and I've got HVL numbers all kind of based on that. It doesn't make sense for us with our free and reduced populations nearing 22% to do that, but we're at least looking into it. Didn't mean to make it a discussion item, I just, I really want our community to know, because I do get calls on it, you know, if you're making money in lunch, why do you charge more? It doesn't make sense, and I just want people to know that that's out of our control.
And we have some capital expenditures coming out of that down for the elementary school kitchen water heater.
We've got a few things that Dave wants to work on down at the elementary. He's got a couple bigger ticket items, so it'll be nice to have that in there. I think that washing machine, or the dishwasher is kind of hanging on by its last.
Sorry, remember, yeah?
Yep, so there's some, there's some items, but, thanks Josh, appreciate it.
Josh, the only other statement or question I'd have is, I hit you up a lot of times in this OPEB thing. So we levied a number of years ago with a 10-year plan. We levied for approximately $1 million, and I thought process was about 100K a year. In 10 years, it'll be gone. So when we look at all of this OPEB information, essentially are we on track to be doing just that?
We're on track to do exactly what we planned to do, for sure. I think the idea or the thought process we started talking about in the finance committee is, what do we want to do, and what refinancing will add to that 10 years is done. We've kind of had a nice spot, we've been able to take $100 each year and offset some of those costs. Prior to having that amount, we didn't have that. We had to just fund it through the general fund. It was just kind of pay as we meant, which definitely isn't going to go again. It'll just be a concern, and once we get past that 10 years is done, what do you either reduce or increase, so put that $100,000 back into the regular budget?
We can levy again.
Yeah.
As an option, right?
Yeah, but I think they've taken away the rights, just with my board action, I think we'd have to be a board approved, but that's something that we can definitely get.
That'll, that'll change again before that.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Any other questions? I would look for a motion to approve the finance report. Motion by Kurt.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Nothing under the old business, under new, under the new business, we have a consent agenda items which are in, are considered routine and are attached. For any reason, somebody would like to pull out any of those, you can certainly do that, otherwise we can vote on them in their entirety. Any questions on consent agenda items?
I have a question about the resignation of halftime RTL education assistant, the elementary.
I'm just going to thank her for her time after you're done voting, but, you know, Penny Robinson has been with our organization for quite some time now and really done a nice job. She's kind of the person that steps up to the plate anytime we've needed her to move around. I think she's probably done every paraposition in the district, basically anything we've ever asked her to do, she has done. It's just time for her to take care of her family and do those things, we really thank her for her service, and if she wants to come back and work for Cannon Falls Schools, we open our arms to her, she's been a really good employee.
Is that a position that will be replaced then?
We're working through a few things. Derek is getting extremely creative, and there's some movement that we can do. What's nice about those is they're not full-time, so he can kind of shift around. You almost need some in the morning and some in the afternoon, but Derek is the king of schedules, so he will, he will get it done.
I just know we've had a lot, we wanted to put a lot of emphasis on RTL, so.
The RTL, yep, that's good. And we certainly will, it's one of our biggest initiatives down at the elementary, he will, you know.
That's a good one.
That's, it's supposed to be careful.
Nice response to intervention. Okay. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Brenda. Seconded. Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Expenditures, attachment F. 43168, teachers on call, $3,800.
Yep, that's our subs. Remember a lot of that comes out of staff development when they go on staff development
Get from motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the winter assistant coaches, attachment G. Anything new or creative here?
Well, some new names, some going from boys' basketball to girls' basketball, some old coaches coming back, and so some people moving around too. So some good, some good coaches, good thing.
Now a little light up group basketball.
Well, we don't know how many levels we'll play. We're assuming four, so we're still looking for that last one, so.
Lisa Dahl is the assistant dance coach?
Yeah.
And she's out of?
She's been the JV coach at Fairville for a number of years.
That's where I know the name, JV Fairville.
So who's the coach? Oh, that might. I can't explain.
You only knew one on those lists.
Kate, look for a motion to approve. Rob, did you make that first?
Kurt can go ahead.
Kurt made that motion.
I'll second his motion.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve Form A from the High School League. That's on the back of your pages here.
Give this one to Jake too.
Yeah, this is, um...
Do you have to do a roll call on this, sorry?
No, the resolutions are in this one.
Okay. Okay, so this is State High School League Foundation. It's a grant that you can apply for, and it'll reimburse you for some free and reduced students who participate in athletics, as we do waive their fees. So we report our numbers to the state, and then we receive some in return.
It's a resolution. Jake, I lied, it is a resolution. You're right.
It's a two-page.
The only list, Jake.
Kate, would look for a motion to approve?
To approve, I'll make the motion.
Brenda made that motion. Who's going to second it?
I will.
Seconded by Rob.
Yes.
You want to do a roll call?
Roll call.
Therefore, be it resolved that Cannon Falls School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Kurt?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. And Rob?
Yes.
That is passed, 4-0 on the roll call. Skip at E. Moving down to consideration to approve the second reading of Policy 505 and the policy series 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, and 900. Second read.
Well, these are, yeah, these are kind of not your everyday-used ones. The principals and I do reference these. The 500s that are going to be coming up are kind of more our, oh Tim, what would you like to call them, our daily? It seems like, they're just used a lot more. But these are your second readings of the ones you did last month. If you have any specific questions, I can answer those, but again, thank you to Deb Karlik and Lori for really putting a lot of work into getting these done correctly, and they match up with MSBA, and our policies look really, really good.
If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda made the motion. Kurt seconded it. Other discussion? All in favor of the second readings of all of the above, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the adaptive athletics agreement with GCEP.
Yeah, Lake City is moving in, and they're coming to the Goodyear County Ed District, and they have a very strong adaptive athletics group and organization over there. And so a lot of that new information has been brought to the table, and we've had a lot of conversation about it. Red Wing also has adaptive bowling and some other things for their athletes. And so we started talking about the Goodyear County Ed District Superintendent level, brought it back to our A.D.s, and Jake and I had a pretty extensive conversation on this, and we thought this would be really good for kids. It ultimately gives opportunities, and, you know, you don't have the whole packet here, but this outlays everything it would cost. I thought it was such a great recommendation. One-fifth of this, so about $2,100 would be for Cannon Falls. I went to the Cannon Falls Education Foundation, and they have agreed to pay for this. But I do need it board-approved that you accept adaptive athletics. The A.D., there is a stipend in here for that that won't go to Jake, that will be the Goodyear, the Goodyear A.D., he got that one. He has a lot of passion behind it too. There's some other things in here, but I just think this is a really neat opportunity for a kid to walk down the hallway and be wearing a Cannon Falls Bomber jersey, and they may be playing adaptive, you know, bowling or golf or anything. And the travel costs are very, very minimal on this. You know, they go to Red Wing and bowl there, and everything's on iPad, so you're competing against Alexandria, but you can see your competitor, they're bowling kind of, you know, different formats. So the transportation cost is low. The only thing the district would pick up on this is if a para needed to go along with an athlete, we would have to cover that. So there is some cost there, but I thought it was pretty great that the ed foundation is picking up for the first year for us to pilot it. If for some reason Jake doesn't like it, or, you know, something we don't like about the program, we don't have to continue.
So 10-5 roughly is the...
That's for all five districts. The Goodyear County Gophers is what the kids name themselves. They want to be a gopher, I guess.
So this exists already with everyone?
No.
No, just 30?
This is brand new. Every board is either voting on it tonight or next Monday night. And so we hope to have the whole group do it. It becomes more powerful and less expensive, so one-fifth of this would be for us.
Is this a co-ed participation?
Yes. And I did list everything that's in here, how you, you can be any disability area, you can actually be, there's Tourette's categories, there's obesity categories, there's, there's just so many cool categories that allow kids to become active, so.
Will they, will they be paying a fee like other athletes?
That's a good question. Jake actually asked that as well. At this point, no. Down the road, I think if we did find enough athletes to do it, and there, you know, there was a cost associated with it, I don't know why you wouldn't charge the $1.25. At this time, there is not a charge for it. You can alter that if you'd like. I guess right now we just want to kind of get it up and going, and since I have a, someone willing to fund it, or an organization willing to fund it, I thought we could go with it.
So when they participate, what is their, what is their logo? And you say, is it for us bombers, or would be the Goodyear?
It'll be the Goodyear gopher. It's, their jerseys, the way they've got it, is you wear your home team kind of on the front, and then you're a Goodyear County Ed Gopher on the back. So when they're here, they can still be a bomber, you know, because they're here all day, and, so. We have about 150 kids that could qualify for this, we thought.
Qualify the district?
Yeah, no, just our school. Sharon kind of went through the list, and a lot of kids that could qualify.
This is, they'll be doing this all year long, and I'll screw you along.
Mr. Bell volunteered to be a coach, so.
For the bowling team.
I didn't hear your name.
I'm Dars.
Dars.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that was, it was voted on by the Goodyear Ed District Board last time we met, and it's a lot of support there, and it seems to be a really good program for our kids to get involved, and athletics can be acting. So I'd like to thank the ed foundation for volunteering on that too. I didn't know that, so that's great.
I'll make a motion to approve the adaptive athletic agreement with GCEP.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Brenda. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That is carried.
It will be a one-year trial, and then we'll come back to, to see if you want to make it permanent or not.
Reports? Is this our off week?
Nope. And Ashley texted me right before we came in here, she's very sorry, something came up, very important, and she couldn't be here, so.
Where's Matt? No.
Yeah. He had something also tonight, so, and I don't remember what it was.
And she felt bad, because there's a lot of state action going on, so I hope, maybe we could let Jake at least say what's going on.
We have some people to congratulate specifically.
Yeah, we've got some remarkable athletes right now.
Catherine Hocken qualified, state cross-country, she'll run on Saturday at 11:00, and they have that St. Alph over in Northfield. Football wrapped up this week, volleyball wrapped up this week, soccer's all wrapped up, so just one runner left, but it's been a good fall.
And tennis.
Tennis.[1747.82]
Tennis.
Tennis. They got a doubles team. They were the three seed in the section tournament. They ended up winning the section tournament, winning, won their first match on, last Thursday at the state tournament. Then the next match, if they were to have lost, it would have been done, ended up going into a tiebreaker. They won eight, six in that tiebreaker, and it put them into day two. Then they beat a team from Elith Gilbert, which put them in the state championship match, and they were, they lost in that match, but it was a fun ride for them.
Great run.
Yeah.
You know, tennis has been around for so long, and it's been so successful, we just happen to be in the same section as lurs, and that's kind of the gold standard for girls' tennis for the last twenty years, but we've had some extremely successful teams and individuals, and it's nice to see them do so well and take a run like that.
That's the result. Yeah. It's fun to watch.
Upcoming meetings. Regular board meeting November tenth, which will canvass the election results, and our board retreat is on November twelfth at seven o'clock at the Mill Street Tavern. And at that meeting, we'll have canvassed those results, first reading of other policy series, and anything else that you deem for the cause that you'd like to either submit to Lori or Beth to get on there.
Did I mess that up? Is it supposed to be six o'clock at Mill Street?
It is supposed to be six o'clock.[1689.31]